The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! That's the whole point! He's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see!
Test one, two, and two. Test... Hello, hello. A little higher? Maybe a lot higher?
For you, I can do that, Tom.
Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Now the music's higher.
Well, yeah.
Alright. That'll work.
Yeah, everything would have just got turned out for you.
Alright, let's see if we can get... Let's get this posted to Facebook best we can. We're gonna post it on Methuen Sound Off page because we're talking about Methuen today. I don't know why it's doing this. I know, I know. I was a little skimpy on the baba paws. I don't know, my voice is doing something weird today. Alright, let's get this show on the road, shall we? As he burns down his cigarette. 97... Wow!
You've just given out your phone number?
No, when I was on radio, we always started the show with the phone number to call in. But I haven't been on radio for 10 years and I almost started the show with a phone number. How about that? Wow. Right out of the cobwebs of my mind. Hi, how you guys doing? My name's Tom Duggan, here with the Paying Attention Podcast. Hi, your top two guys, Smoke Shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. Got an interesting show for you today, especially if you like when we do local stuff. We're gonna talk about Methuen City Council, Steve Saber, my favorite topic. And you know what? People always say, "Why do you pick on Steve so much? Why do you focus so much on him?" I gotta tell you, after today's show, you're not gonna be saying that. You're gonna go, "You know what? Because the guy makes it easy, that's why." I've actually got him on tape saying he doesn't want to feed hungry people in Methuen. I've actually got a tape of him saying, "He would rather people go hungry because he doesn't like the process of the way they're being fed." I mean, it's stunning and you're gonna hear it for yourself if you don't watch the meetings. And by the way, there's really no reason to watch these meetings if you're a regular, average Methuen voter, a regular, average Methuen citizen. Because if you did, you'd probably never vote again. Like, if you watch the meetings on a regu... The only people who watch the meetings on a regular basis are people like me. Like, the political sycophants, the people who love politics, love the... Want to know every minute of what's going on and dissect it. Other than that, like, the average person just living their life, who votes like every two years and maybe gets involved and starts paying attention to the election like a week before the election. There's no need for any of you guys to watch these meetings. First of all, I do it for you, so if something good happens, I will come in and tell you what's going on, like I will today. But otherwise, there's no need for you guys to do it, because if you all did, none of you would ever vote again. If you saw the way these people behave at public meetings, you'd be like, "Wow, like, I actually just thought some of these people were good people." And by the way, some of them are. I'm not saying they're all bad. But I'm just saying that the ones that are acting bad, sometimes you look at them and go, "Wow, I voted for that guy. I thought he was a good guy." Before I get into the local stuff though, there's a couple of things I want to talk about real quick. We're losing our friend Dave Abdu. Dave Abdu has been a Lawrence City Councilor going back... Christ, I can't even... I can't even count how... And he watches the show faithfully, by the way. Lawrence City Councilor Dave Abdu, I think, got elected, maybe like 2006, maybe? Like, we started the paper in 2004 and I think he ran like two or three years after we started the paper. Like, maybe right around that time. So he's been a city councilor for a long time in Lawrence. And he has been like a rock. He's been one of those people that... Every year, you hope he's running for reelection because he's one of the few voices of sanity on that council. And like, every council's got one, so you know what I'm talking about. Him and Michael Plant have done yeoman's work on the city council in Lawrence. I can't say that for all of them. In fact, I can't say that for many of them. He did run against Willie Lantigua the Chief in 2009. And as much as he's my friend and I love him and we went to St. Pat's together and we hung out in high school a little bit, and I worked on his campaign against Willie, he lost that election because he wouldn't play dirty. And I mentioned that a couple, I don't know, last week or the week before, when we had Dave Consolian from Pleasant Valley Landscaping, a great, great guy and a good supporter of the show and the paper. So we're losing Dave and, you know, when I think back about how we could have beaten Willie, had Dave let me... We had some great dirt on Willie. We had some amazing dirt on Willie that would have completely destroyed him a week before the election. And it wasn't dirt like he was sleeping with somebody who was married. It wasn't that kind of dirt. It was, in fact, and now I'm starting to remember what the dirt was. In fact, it was, Wilfredo La Boy, the former superintendent in Lawrence, had been indicted. And before he was convicted, in between the time he was indicted and he was convicted, Willie went to the state legislature and asked them to transfer his pension from New York to Massachusetts, so that if he retired before he was convicted, he'd get a full pension. And I had a file folder this thick and I remember me and another person who I won't mention and Dave sitting in Denny's for about two hours and I've got this big, thick folder. I'm like, "Look, I got all the documents, the sign-offs, everything." And he's like, "That's not how I want to win." And I'm like, "Well, then you're not gonna win. You're gonna end up being a private citizen the day after the election because Willie plays dirty." And he said, "Yeah, but I gotta look myself in the mirror in the morning." And I'm like, "Yeah, but everybody else is gonna have to suffer. You get to look yourself in the mirror, but the rest of us suffer." Well, not me, actually. I did very well under Willie Lantigua because the one thing he said that was right on Kabafi's show... When he said Willie Lantigua's name sells newspapers. He was right about that. But you know, you have to admire a guy like that because he's... See, I have no morals at all. I have no morals whatsoever. And I look at a guy like Dave and I admire him because even though he knew he was gonna lose if he didn't do that... Actually, I'm not too sure he knew that, but we were telling him that. He would rather, he legitimately would rather lose an election than play dirty. And that just goes to what kind of a person he is. He's just a good person. Horrible politics, but a good person. And I'm always looking at the politics angle of it. Like, I don't care if you beat your wife when you go home. If you do a good job on the council, if you do a good job as mayor, I'm gonna support you.
I mean, don't beat your wife, please.
Well, yeah, I'm not encouraging it. Steve Saber will be running around telling people, "I'm encouraging people to beat their wives now."
Which is why I thought I'd put a disclaimer in there.
Appreciate that, yes. Always have to inoculate ourselves against the li-
We're not advocating for that on the show, thank you very much.
Yeah, we always have to inoculate ourselves against the liars who take what you say out of context. So Dave is leaving and I'd like to have him on the show. I'm gonna try and book him maybe after the election because I think our next set of five or six shows is really gonna be booked. I've also decided that we are gonna do some debates from Methuen. And I think we're gonna stick with, we're gonna do the West End, which would be great because I'd love to see, I would love, I would, there's nothing more than I wanna see than to do a West End debate and have Mike Semard come back. I would just love that so much. He, I don't think he'll do it, but I would love that so much. I can't even tell you how much that would make me happy. We're also probably going to focus on the at-large city council race because I'm hearing that there are people who are thinking of jumping into that race, and they should. There should be nine people running for that, running for those three jobs. In any community, forget Methuen, in any community, if you've got three open jobs at an at-large city council, you should have nine candidates going into a primary. Now, I'm gonna repeat one thing that I say at every election and you're gonna hear it from today until after the election, especially during the debates. Methuen has this, what I call the Incumbent Protection Act. So if there aren't enough people to eliminate in a primary, they cancel the primary. Alright? And this is bad for a lot of reasons, but I'll just give you two major ones. The first is, if you're not eliminating anybody off the ballot, that gives a write-in candidate an opportunity to go to the ballot on Election Day and mount a write-in campaign and maybe unseat an incumbent. Or maybe unse... Or maybe push out somebody that got their signatures and got themselves on the ballot. And that's good for democracy. That's good for local politics. It gets people involved. The other thing is, when you cancel a primary, when you have a primary, it signals to the average voter who doesn't vote in a primary that there's an election coming. They see the publicity, they see the stories, they see who won, who lost, who was a sore loser, who wasn't. And that usually gins up the issues that are going to be talked about between the primary and the final election. When you cancel a primary, I can't tell you how many people say to me after the election, "I didn't know the election was last week." "Well, wait, don't they do a primary first?" So Methuen does this and they've been doing it for years. And they do it because it helps incumbents. If you cancel a primary, then the incumbent has a much better shot winning against two other candidates rather than one other candidate in a final, right? So, please stop canceling your primaries. I've talked about it with all the candidates in the last election. A lot of them agreed with me. Some of them said they were gonna try and do something about it. Here we are, two years later. Hasn't been done. Please do that. Also, Freddie, in the current edition of the Valley Patriot, you know, Freddie says, Freddie's got, no, I'm calling him Freddie now, isn't that awful? My brain is just somewhere else today. I don't even know where I am. I feel like Joe Biden. Winston, Freddie passed away, so Winston is our new mascot. Winston wants to know where the dog park in Methuen is. He's still waiting for a dog park. So that's his quote, that's his quote in this edition of the Valley Patriot, which is on the streets. And Kane, our other mascot, is on the front page of the paper this month with a story about Operation Delta Dog. Okay, real quick, Britney Spears. It's important to understand what's going on with Britney Spears because it's happening everywhere. It's not just in California. I can't tell you guys how many people I know personally who have had a scumbag lawyer petition the court for conservatorship of their ailing father, ailing mother, ailing grandmother. And then this lawyer who petitions the court to be conservator of the person's estate because maybe they're beginning Alzheimer's, maybe they're on their way out, then isolates the family, refuses to let them see the person, isolates the finances, liquidates assets that could be like family heirlooms that maybe the son or the grandson or the granddaughter might want. The probate court in Massachusetts is a nightmare. In California, it's worse. And at some point, Britney Spears had some kind of mental breakdown. And when she was underage. And so her father takes over and becomes conservator of the billions of dollars that she's made as Britney Spears, as an entertainer. And here she is in her 30s and her father is still not just conservator of her estate, but conservator of her. Which means, if she wants to have a baby and the father says no and puts her on birth control, there's nothing she can do about it. She's not a free person. And when somebody becomes the conservator of you and your estate, you're not a free person either. And a lot of scumbag lawyers know that. And we've seen numerous, in fact, it happened to me. And I'm not gonna go through the whole, the whole details of the story. But my grandparents were failing and my grandmother's brother, whom she hadn't seen in 10 years, he lived in Florida, who had healthcare proxy and power of attorney for years and years and years, like, long before I came on board. And I was, I moved in with grandma and grandpa to take care of them. And one day, my grandmother's brother showed up and said, "Yeah, no, they're going to a nursing home." Just like that. Like, one day, out of the blue, everybody goes, they're going to a nursing home. He, they forbid me to see him. They liquidated the assets. They had, I mean, it was ridiculous what happened to my grandparents. And it's happened to a number of people. And now it's happened to Britney Spears, at least we're now finding out about it. And there's gotta, there's gotta be some kind of federal law. And I'm the last guy to call for a federal law for anything. The federal government's way too involved in our life. But there's gotta be federal protections for people who are under conservatorship. And there's gotta be some kind of a, an adequate appeals process for family members who find out that behind their back, some scumbag lawyer went to court and got conservatorship of someone they don't even know. Like, they got tipped off by somebody at elder services or something, that this person's beginning Alzheimer's. And boom, they're in court the next day and they're in control of everything. And by the way, my grandmother's brother, who liquidated all my grandparents' property and assets, got a percentage of what he liquidated. Right? That's why, that's why people step into court and try to get conservatorship of an estate. Because when you're the conservator, you get a percentage of the estate. Right? You get a percentage of what's spent, you get a percentage of what comes in. And Britney Spears is millions and millions and millions of dollars. Her father's been fleecing her for years, for decades. So we're keeping an eye on the Britney Spears thing, not so much because it's Britney Spears. We know about it because it's Britney Spears. But it opens up a door for the public to start understanding how some of the scarless things that happen in court happen and how people who are disadvantaged, people with maybe a mental problem, people who have Alzheimer's, people who have memory issues, how they get totally taken advantage and their estate gets robbed, right out from underneath their families. Or right out, right out from underneath them. So, just wanted to make that as a, as a separate aside. I know we're not used to talking about things like Britney Spears, right? But first of all, she's hot, right? And she's rich. And she's dumb as a rock. To me, that's 100 points. Like, you don't even need anything else after that. Like, what else do you need? Hot, rich, and dumb as a rock. Like, seriously. No? You don't think so?
I don't know. I said, "How do we know?" I don't know.
I don't know. Just from listening to her interviews, she can barely put a sentence together sometimes, I guess. Maybe that's why he's got some conservatorship.
Maybe it's media perception.
I gotcha.
I don't know.
Alright, what else? Do we have anything else so I can get to Methuen? We got 24 minutes. We can hit Methuen now. So, video number one is what, the taxis, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, real quick, I think the first one's three minutes? Or is that the one-minute one?
That's two, one minute fifty.
Alright. So, so here's a great discussion. You've got Captain, at the Methuen City Council meeting, you've got Captain Hagar is explaining to the city council that there's a taxi company in Methuen. And they, what happened is they applied for a license, they applied for a business license with the state. The state gave them a business license. And they thought that's all they needed to operate. So they opened up and they were acting as a taxi company till the police department came along and said, "No, no, no, you need a license for Methuen, from the city of Methuen. We have more hurdles for you to go through." Because it's, you know, Methuen's so business-friendly, right? We have more hurdles for you to go through. You have to go through more hurdles and go before more boards and fill out more applications so you can get a Methuen city license to operate a taxi company. And so they shut them down. And the mayor decided to utilize the fact that they were shut down, but they were a transportation company, to hire them to deliver food to hungry people in Methuen who need food. Like, through the CARES program. They had all, all these food was donated and money was donated to buy food for people that have what's now called "food insecurity." I love how politicians create these phrases. It's ridiculous, right? So, here he is explaining this and Steve Saber, believe it or not, couldn't make this up if I tried. I might be able to make it up if I tried, but I never would have come up with this. Steve Saber said, and you're gonna hear it for yourself right now, he actually said he would rather Methuen residents go hungry because he doesn't like the way the process is being done.
...and they could not operate.
I'm just really concerned with this whole thing. I just think that someone dropped the ball, clearly. And if we're gonna allow a cab, a company to operate as a taxi company in Methuen, then I think that falls on the police too, because you usually bring these licenses before us. So, someone's gotta be doing that.
We haven't had any delivery companies come before us in the last couple... That was-
Well, that should have been a warning sign too, then, to be honest with you. I'm just not comfortable doing that at all. And I just... We get more and more headaches that come out of this CARES program right now. We have. And I'm getting tired of all of this because it falls on us too. Mayor, I got a question regarding the twenty-sixth-
Let me respond to what you just said, Mr. Chair. So this doesn't come out of the CARES program. This is a, this is a separate grant.
But it's working directly with the CARES program.
This works with Methuen CARES. And I know that's a-
We have a lot of CARES. Which one? Methuen?
Methuen CARES.
Correct.
Which is not the CARES program.
I'm talking about the Methuen CARES, the one that we act as a nonprofit, that one.
Right.
Okay.
So you don't believe in providing food for the residents? Is that what you-
Sorry?
You don't believe in providing food for residents who need it? Is that your-
I wanna do it where they're safe and that the company is licensed. And we know who's walking into people's homes. Yeah, otherwise I don't. And I don't, I'm not, I don't even want to accept this 45.9 million if we're not gonna handle it the right way.
Wow, you're mixing apples and oranges.
I am gonna get to that in a minute. But as far as the cab company, we all approved it unanimously. It's on all of us. We're just not asking enough questions. We're just not. I'm not. So, we'll move on to the 45.9 million. Mayor, we-
Yeah, yeah. The one thing that Steve Saber is not bereft of is asking questions. All this guy does is ask loaded questions. And by the way, he, 99 times out of 100, already has the answer to the questions and then plays stupid when someone gives him the answer and says, "By the way, we already gave you that like five times." "Oh, I don't remember that. Oh, what do you, what do you mean?" But can you imagine? Can you imagine that you're a Methuen resident? And let's say you're, let's say you're a senior citizen or you're disabled or maybe you're unemployed and you have no job. And the unemployment that you're getting isn't cutting it for you. Of whatever your circumstance is, you're hungry. And the city is providing food to hungry people in Methuen. By the way, I think that's a great thing. Like, say what you want about Neil Perry, but I think that's a great thing. That finally, at the local level, there are people in local governments, not just Methuen, because Lawrence is doing some of this too, that they're actually thinking, "How can we use the levers of local government to actually help people rather than to gin up issues so that we can run for reelection and maintain more power?" But imagine the gall to say publicly that, "No, no, I would rather people not get food deliveries because I don't like the way you're doing it." And he's, he's, he does this a lot. Steve Saber does this a lot. He tries to make you think you heard something you didn't hear after, like, Neil Perry will answer him or someone else will answer him. And he'll, he'll answer them as if they said something totally different. So the person listening at home thinks that the person that he's objecting to said something different. And what the mayor said is, "This company's not acting as a taxi company." They were acting as a taxi company. The city, the police department shut them down. They're not acting as a taxi company. But they can still deliver food. And by the way, Steve, do you know everybody that's walking into everybody's house from Meals on Wheels? Do you know that? Do they have to come before the city council and register with you? This guy sits at, if I played you the entire meeting, and I wish I had an intern that could edit video for me, we will get another one. But every single issue that comes up, Steve Saber starts or ends with, "Well, we should be approving that. Why aren't we approving that? That should come before us." And here's what's really funny, because there've been a million Steve Sabers that I've covered over the last 30 years. Lawrence, Methuen, Haverhill, doesn't matter. He thinks he's a genius, but he's doing the same stupid shit that other politicians have been doing for 25 years. He is constantly trying to sap away power from the mayor's office. Like, regardless of who the mayor is. He's constantly trying to increase the power of the council and make the co- If there's a paperclip that's bought, he wants the council to have to approve that paperclip. He wants to know who's buying the paperclip, he wants to know who's gonna use the paperclip, he wants to know if the paperclip's gonna get stuck in the mail and sent to somebody, so he'll have to buy another paperclip. And that, government comes to a standstill when stuff like that happens. Jessica also wants that, by the way. She wants every paperclip to come before her. And so you watch these meetings and everything, there was an issue right before this where the mayor said that he's hiring some kind of an overseer to oversee the CARES money. Like, a financial overseer type person. And first of all, I always thought that was the mayor's job. I don't think you should be hiring an overseer. The mayor's job is to handle all the money that comes in and if there's extra money, you just deal with it, right? That's your job. But okay, he wants to hire an overseer. Fine, we'll put that aside. First thing out of Saber's mouth, "Well, is that person gonna come before us? Are we gonna have to approve that person?" And by the way, who does that person answer to? And the mayor said, "Well, she's gonna answer, the person's gonna answer to the CFO, the person from the state, who's running the finances because Methuen's in receivership." And he was all worked up. "Why? Why won't this come before the council? This should come before the council." And again, here's what's funny, because this has happened now. There's been a million Steve Sabers that I've had to cover in the last 30-something years. The people who do this, that get on city councils, that obsess on trying to take power away from a mayor because they're not mayor, want to be mayor. And Steve Saber himself has said he wants to be mayor and is actually toying with the idea right now of running against Neil Perry. Oh, please let that be hap- Please, I'm not even, I'm not even Catholic anymore. I'm gonna meet the side of the cross, "Please let him run for mayor." Because, boy, the stories will have for you. Believe me when I tell you, I've been doing a lot of research for the last three years on this guy. But he wants to be mayor. And so we saw this with Dan Rivera, right? Dan Rivera sat on the city council and everything that came before him, he wanted everything to be with the council power. He wanted the mayor to have no power because Willie Lantigua was mayor. Right? And then all of a sudden, Dan runs for mayor and it can't get anything done because everything he wants to do has to go before the council because of him! And Steve Saber's gonna run into the same problem. Eventually, he is gonna run for mayor and he might win at some point. And when he does, his hands are going to be tied. And then he's gonna spend his entire time as mayor, as Dan did, trying to increase the power of the mayor and decrease the power of the council. But when he does that, there'll be another Steve Saber on the council saying, "No, everything should come before us." And that's why we have what we call in politics, "Gridlock." Gridlock. That's what we have in Methuen. We have a mayor who, again, whatever you think of him, I think is really trying to do the right thing financially for the city. And all this talk about he's misspending CARES money, I don't believe it for a minute. I'm sure that there have been some expenses that have been disallowed because the requirements are very vague on the CARES money. But I don't believe for a minute that, like, anybody's stealing money, walking out the door with cash, hiring their friends, hiring their family. And by the way, if that is happening, please let me know. If you got proof of that, I'll write the story myself. I will. But up until that time, we have to go on the fact that we've seen no evidence of that. We had people say that there's evidence, just like people said there was evidence about a lot of things. But if they can't produce the evidence, then as far as we know, they're full of shit. Alright? So, I don't know, I don't know what more Steve Saber has to do to not get reelected, to not get people's votes in Methuen, but to say, "I would rather people go hungry than have this program because I don't like the way it's being done." Like, I honestly, I can't, I could, I don't care if it was my best friend, I don't care if Dave Abdu got up and said exactly that, I could never support him again, like, ever. And he, and this is a guy that I've known my whole life. So it's not just that it's Steve, but I mean, it's a bonus that it's Steve, right? If someone else had said it, I'd be saying the exact same stuff. It just gives me more delight that it's Steve because it's one more example of how, of how manipulative this guy is and how little he really cares about the average person. This is a guy who only cares about one thing, his own power. And you hear it in every single, every single issue that they bring up. "Why isn't this coming before us? Why aren't we approving it? Why don't we get a say? Why aren't you telling us?" Okay, don't believe me? Here's an instance coming up in the next clip where he has access to all the information that he wants and he's still complaining. This is great. You're gonna love this.
Responsible.
But I wanna put to rest all of the criticisms and the questions that we have been dealing with. And I wanna make sure that we're getting answers in a timely manner. I know that the counselor has been asking for a full report of the, I believe, 4.9 million that we've received. How much was that totaling?
It was 4.3.
4.9.
You've got all of it except for from November, 2020 to the present.
What I would want-
Let me finish, please.
Go ahead.
You asked a question I'm trying to answer.
I didn't finish the question.
You see two previous, fully detailed, so we need to stop saying that we didn't get any of these. The only thing you haven't received is from November to the current. We did provide you the totals on that. The council asked for the detailed breakdown. And I answered at that time, as I did again tonight, that once we've finished the FY22 budget, we would provide that. And we will. We've kept nothing from this council, nor will we.
So, when you send it out, if you will please not send just the third phase, but since you already sent the first two phases, it would be helpful if everything is contained in one email. Phases one, two, three?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then the detail, again, I know the question has been asked for a long time and I would like to get, I agree, I'd like to see that before we start dealing with the next round of money coming in. And I would think that if we're spending money on a regular basis, that that should already be accounted for. It should be a report that should be easily generated.
It is.
You can see everything we spend, counselor. You can see it all.
We can't see it. We will when you send it.
Yes, you can. So let's dispel that right now.
Where are we seeing it?
You can go to the website and see every nickel we spent. So we invested a lot of money in a fiscal transparency center that people can look at and see every dime we spent.
The report is not done yet.
Yeah. You said, you just said, "We can't see what we spent."
Sorry?
The council has asked for a specific report pulled on what we, everything we spend is out there in the fiscal transparency center.
Well, if it's out there, then you should be able to just send us the full report.
You should be able to go on and look at it.
Right.
That's what we did that for.
We're not seeing the Phase Three spending. You just said, "Capital has to wait till after the budget is done."
To prepare a separate report, per the council's request. I'm not gonna stop the budget to do that. All the spending, let me be crystal clear, all the spending, every nickel that's spent by this city is published on the website.
All of the money from the-
Everything. Everything. You can see every vendor.
4.9 million, that money, that we receive from the government?
Yes.
COVID?
You can see where it goes.
This is great.
Paul, I'm gonna say we need help finding it because I'm not sitting here.
No, 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 we don't, we don't need help.
I do wanna also-
We would, no, no, we don't need help finding it. We don't need help finding it. We know where to find it. You don't know where to find it because you didn't bother to look. Because when he asks for these things, when he wants the mayor to submit a special report, he's not asking for a special- he's not asking for a special report because he wants the information. The information's already out there, it's already on the website. He's asking for a special report because he wants the mayor's office to spin their wheels and do more work. He's trying to keep them busy, he's trying to distract them. But I mean, imagine, he went on and on and on now for, and I only cut that clip down to like three minutes. He went on and on and on about how this isn't transparency and you're not giving us the information that we want. It's a common theme in every meeting. Because liars, in order to get you to believe they're a lie, have to say it over and over and over, hoping it's going to stick. And Steve Saber's a liar. Let's just face, let's just face facts, he is. And so he keeps saying it every meeting over and over. He's got a couple of his other buddies on the council do the same thing. There's no transparency, you're not giving us what we want, we asked for it, we didn't get it. And here's some of the games that they play. They'll ask something five o'clock the night before the meeting. And then they'll get to the meeting and say, you know, well, we asked for this and we never got it. And they kind of leave out the fact that they asked for it five o'clock the night before. And you know, the mayor's, I don't know, kind of busy, you know what I mean? Like he's running a city. And the CARES money and feeding people that you don't want them to feed. So the, so they asked him for a specific report that had segregated out certain expenditures. And then he gets up there and says, we didn't get the reports, so you're not being transparent. And the mayor, and by the way, he got very testy during this meeting. And I know he regrets when he gets testy, I like when he gets testy. Especially on something like this. Because if you don't put it out there publicly that this guy is a liar and a manipulator and you don't call him out publicly, he's gonna keep getting away with it and he's gonna get one up over on you. He is. And I've been telling Neil that, by the way, since going back to like when he first got elected, when he's like, oh, there's no we, they, there's no us versus them. You know what happens when you, when you stick to a philosophy of there's no us versus them? They're all working together. The people who don't like you, the people that are trying to screw you, they're all working together as a team and you're not. And the people that, that consider themselves on your team, you end up abandoning them. Kind of disloyal, I think, maybe a little bit. But you end up abandoning them by saying, oh, I don't wanna be us versus them. Well, guess what? That's the environment you ran for, that's the environment that you're in. There's nothing you can do about it. And he used to come on the show on a regular basis, and I'm, I'm sure he's gonna be back at some point. But he used to be on the show on a regular basis. Whenever I brought Saber up, he'd roll his eyes, he didn't want, that's all negative stuff. Right, but it's the politics and people care about the politics. People wanna know who the good guys are and who the bad guys are. And when you come out and say there are no bad guys and no good guys, that lets the bad guys get away with doing stuff. And again, if they're all working together and your team's not, because you don't have a team, because you don't believe in teams, the other side's always gonna win. They might lose a battle here or there, but at the end of the day, they're gonna accomplish whatever their objective is and it's usually not that good. So these two clips alone from the last city council meeting should say an awful lot to the voters of Methuen. Unfortunately, it's probably not gonna matter. Because his name is Saber. And there are 40 million Sabers in Methuen. And most of them, unlike Steve, are very likable people. Most of them are good people, I know some of them. And most of them, most of them are really good people. And so they're gonna support the guy that's in their family. And, and the guy, the, the people who grew up in that neighborhood, they're all, they got, they know the Sabers. Look, I endorsed Steve Saber when he first ran for that exact reason. I worked at Bishop's, I knew all the Sabers. I knew all the Bexheras, we were great friends. And when I heard that one of the Sabers was gonna run, I know the family, I'm like, oh, this'll be great. The Sabers are great people. Little did I know, we got the dark sheep. Little did I know that the guy that ended up running is one of the most manipulative dishonest people in politics in the Merrimack Valley. And that's hard to do with Willie Lantigua hanging around. But I gotta tell you that I'm, I'm putting them in the, um, he really is kind of like the Willie Lantigua of Lawrence. I mean, of the Willie Lantigua of Methuen. If, if you, if this guy ever becomes mayor, first of all, it would be great for the Valley patriot. It would be great for us. But it wouldn't be so good for the Valley, it wouldn't be so good for Methuen. Because he'll be doing the same stupid shit Willie was doing when he first got elected. And everything will be based on who he likes and who he doesn't like. And the rules will be skirted for his friends, as someone else was accused of doing. But it will be okay for him because he's doing it. So it's election time, folks. And, uh, I don't know if there's gonna be a, uh, primary election in the East End, he's an East End counselor, which is Minga Valley, that's that whole stretch of, um, 110 Merrimack Street, Methuen. That whole area all the way over to like, I think it ends somewhere around like the Loop. That whole area of Methuen, it's him and Eunice Ziegler. And here's the hard part. People that have been trying to recruit someone to run against Steve Saber, run into the problem of if you get a guy with a really great name that could beat Steve Saber, he could end up knocking out Eunice and then Steve Saber stays and then we lose Eunice. So Eunice is actually like his insurance. I actually wish Eunice would run at large. Because then we could put two people into that race and we might be able to get rid of Steve Saber. But, um, given how popular he is and given how popular his family name is, you're probably not gonna get rid of him. And if he runs for mayor this year or two years from now, he will be a formidable opponent. He plays dirty like Willie does, he's dishonest like Willie is, he knows how to manipulate people and he's got a really good shot. If he runs against Neil Perry this year, he's got a good shot. Now, I know I've said no one can beat Neil Perry this year. And I believe that because I don't think Steve's running. But if he did get into the race, he could beat Neil. Now, will he? That will depend on how the press handles it. That'll depend on how the public perceives it. It'll depend on what scandals come out on either side. But could he beat Neil Perry? Yeah, I think he's one of the few people that could if he ran. Possible. Not saying he will, but he could. And, um, I, I just, I wished people of Methuen paid attention more. That's why it's the name of the show. I wish people of Methuen paid attention more. Because you, you don't want someone in elected office who's hungry for power, who's not an honest broker. And again, I tried to, I tried to warn Neil, I tried to warn him, I tried to warn him. And he's now seeing all the landmines that I told, that I tried to help him avoid. Right? I, I mean, if I say, look, I've been doing this for 35 years, and I know I keep saying that, because that should mean something to people who've only been doing it for like one or two. That like I might actually know what I'm talking about on some of this stuff. Um, I don't know. I, I, I lost my thought. Oh, um, I, I, I just wish Neil had listened to me a year and a half ago. Because if I say, don't go over there, there's landmines over there. And you go over there and you jump up and down in the landmine and you blow up, well, that's your fault, not mine. Right? That's not my fault, I tried to help. And if you didn't listen, you didn't listen. But Steve Saber is a cancer on the Methuen City Council, he's a cancer on the city of Methuen. And if you don't believe me, go back and watch some of the meetings. I know I told you not to watch the meetings, but if, it, just for that reason alone, if, if you don't believe me with the few clips that I bring in here, just watch a meeting by yourself. With no commentary from me at all in your, in your living room. Sit and pull it up on the Methuen City Council on demand page. And watch, randomly pick any meeting. Don't even look at this last meeting. Randomly pick any meeting and watch the whole meeting. And when Steve Saber is talking, stop what you're doing and pay attention to what he says. And it should tell you everything you need to know. All right, so I guess that's it for Methuen. Um, I think he might be coming back. I think he might be coming back, I'm not sure. But I, but I think that, that could happen. Um, he's certainly welcome to come back. And by the way, Steve Saber's always welcome on the show.